Meeting to order at 6:10. Sorry, we're late this evening. We'll start with roll call. Nancy?
Present.
Eleanor?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
All present. Um, I don't even know where I'm at right now. Will we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the public report out. 1C, Employee Release, Government Code 54957. In closed session, the board took action to issue notice to reassign the following employees from their administrative positions pursuant to Education Code Section 44951, effective at the end of 2022-23 school year, and directed the superintendent of designee to send out appropriate legal notices. Employee ID 381258, employee ID 226554, employee ID 613819. 1D, Employee Public Appointment, Elementary Principal, Government Code 54956.95. In closed session, the board took action to appoint Dr. Bill Willis as principal of McCullough Elementary School beginning in 2022-23-24 school year. Congratulations, Mr. Willis. We will start with our student representatives. Bella Moreno from Surfside Academy.
Good evening, Board President Alvarez, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Vitale. I'm Bella Moreno from Surfside Academy, and I'm excited to share some updates on what's happening at Surfside with you. We are so proud of our April Rising Star Jonathan Miguel Sanchez. He has an amazing story of passion, dedication, and perseverance, a role model to us all. Nominated Surfside students were recognized for demonstrating core values at Surfside for the month of April. Congratulations to Surfside Students of the Month Owen Nieves, Lily Brezo, and Alondra Rivera. Students were excited to go on a field trip to Birch Aquarium in San Diego. For many of them, this was their first field trip since the pandemic. Mr. Madsen shared they were enthusiastic as they played I Spy to try to find all the different fish and octopi, and some even had a chance to touch a sea cucumber and a sea star. Up next, Surfside will play against Valley and Twin Oaks. Good luck, team, and take home our win. SD COE hosted a Strengths-Based Leadership Conference through LEGO Serious Play. Our students use their strengths to identify issues in our communities are currently facing, visualized with Legos. Learning how to lead with their strengths inspired our students to use their voice to make an impact in their communities, achieving their highest potential as leaders. Peyton Wilson and Nellie Brown presented at the City Council meeting Wednesday to advocate for the banning of single-use plastic and styrofoam. The city voted unanimously to pass the proposal. Thank you both for advocating for our students and community. Surfside held their first spring social fundraiser, including music, food, and a silent auction last Saturday at the Moose Lodge, and it was a huge success. Also, a huge thank you to all the businesses and individuals that contributed to Surfside's spring social fundraiser. Thank you to Ms. Fumia and Ms. Francis for organizing the fun, incredible event. Congratulations to this week's graduates from Surfside's independent study. Excellent job. We are so proud of you. Thank you, and follow us on Twitter for more updates.
Thank you, Bella. We would go with Presley Riddle from Oceanside High School.
Good evening, Dr. Vitale and President Alvarez. I am Presley Riddle, and I will be representing Oceanside High School ASB and Oceanside High School as a new ASB president. So today, I will be telling you about what we've been up to. In the last month, we've had various lunchtime activities. Some in our Health Academy, we've had a blood drive. We've had multiple of our performing arts, um, performing arts communities, and had a couple of the, like, spring tryouts and competitions and concerts. In the month of May, we had a Health Academy blood drive, where we had the blood bank come in and we had people come and donate blood. And our show choir placed number first in their competition over this course of two days. We had an e-bike safety event held in our PAC, and along with that, we also had our spring orchestra concert. On May 1st, we had our football meeting, where the parents got to meet me and our new coach, Coach Fale, and basically got to know about everything going on in the upcoming season. We are still in AP exam week, but last week, we had a good amount of AP exams, and with the help of our psychology department, they wrote quotes and, like, leadership to encourage us to do great on our exams. We had our drama and desserts for our theater company. And we also had a Black Alliance Block Party and Resource Fair that went on. We want to give a congratulations to Ms. Shannon Martin, who received the Crystal Apple Award. And seven of our Pirates were honored with their artworks at the Congressional Art Awards Celebration at the OMA, at the Oceanside Museum of Arts, with Congressman Mike Levin. And on May 5th, the Pirate Boys Volleyball went number one in D-Fort, and now they're in the CIF playoffs. We also want to give a congratulations to our Skills USA performers, where they received a Bronze Level Award certification, with Bryce S. in becoming a state finalist in cabinet making, and Nick S. in the Intro to Woodworking Competition, won a gold medal in regionals, and fourth place at the State Conference. In our upcoming events, we have an ASB Spirit Week. We have a fentanyl awareness assembly, and we have the OHS Senior Prom and CIF Track. We have the Athlete Saber Awards and Grad Night, all coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we welcome Natalie Lopez from El Camino High School.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Board President Dr. Alvez and Superintendent Dr. Vitale and her executive staff for giving me the time tonight to speak. Congratulations to the ECHS 2023 Valid Victorians and Co-Salad Victorians. Congratulations to Jonah Gathright for being the 2023 Valid Victorian, and Joshua Garcia and Darcy Tran for being our Co-Salad Victorians. Jonah and Darcy. Jonah and Darcy will be attending UCLA, and Joshua will be attending UCSD this upcoming fall. Around campus, our PALS program recognized the Wildcat seniors who are going off to college or the military. Each student was recognized with their name and what college they'll be attending this fall. Assets and Clubs. National Honor Society, the National Honor Society Club and our Rock Band Club participated in the annual Wildcat Foundation Car Show. Also, congratulations to the Cyber Void, our ECHS Cyber Security Club assets. Cyber Void, who recently competed in the national competition for all high schools. Out of 6,000 teams, we are so proud to announce that they placed fifth in the nation. Performing Arts, our Dance 2 and Dance 3 had their final showcase this year. Even staff came together to perform their annual dance, including our very own Principal Ms. Fraser. The Annual Wildcat Foundation Car Show. The Wildcat Foundation hosted their annual car show, and it was a great turnout for the community. Thank you to Shawna Williamson, the Foundation President, and the rest of the Foundation members for all their hard work to raise funds for Wildcat t-shirt grants and student scholarships. Athletics. Boys and Girls Lacrosse had their final game in their senior nights. Also, congratulations to our Boys Volleyball for having their senior nights. Upcoming Events. The JOURTC Rewards are coming up. Wildcat Camp, which helps bring over incoming middle schoolers to figure out and see how easy and what it's all about. Prom, Senior Week, and Senior Award Nights, and graduation. Thank you.
The board has taken action to remove 7A from the agenda. I'll call for approval of the agenda with removal of 7A at this time.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll start with our report.
So I just want to thank our students for sharing all the wonderful things going on at our schools, and I'll just accentuate a couple more things. I had the opportunity to attend Pablo Talk School of the Arts presentation of Disney's 101 Dalmatians. And I don't know exactly how many they had in the cast. Maybe it was 101. I don't know. I don't know. It wasn't meant to be a joke, but there were so many kids in the cast, and it was such a wonderful performance. And I just wanted to say congratulations to all the staff and the students for their amazing and very adorable presentation of 101 Dalmatians. And today, actually, I had the opportunity to participate in El Camino Student Mock Interviews, where we have the opportunity to run students through interviews for a job. And they actually create, using Google, an actual website with information about themselves. They have their own Google site. And all the kids I interviewed were amazing. They all have their future planned and their path to get there, and I was very impressed with them. So Ms. Hawkins, thank you so much for including me in that opportunity. It was a complete blast and a highlight, for sure. And I just wanted to congratulate our own staff member, Cherie Benet. She was a NICSY Award winner. She was chosen nominated by her peers and chosen for the Outstanding Work in Special Education Administrator category, and she'll be awarded at the NICSY Excellence in Special Education later this year. So congratulations, Cherie.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. We'll start with Nancy. Board Report.
Thank you. This month, I had the opportunity to attend the California School Board Association's Coast to Coast Advocacy Trip in Washington DC to lobby for key priorities in K-12 schools. So as a team, our key areas of focus statewide were to highlight the urgent need to increase federal funding for special education. The federal government, when they created the idea, passed the law, they said that they'd fund 40%, and currently, they're only funding 10%. And they haven't raised the funding level. So all of the local districts have to make up for that. And so we're urging the federal government to increase the funding and also increase funding for mental health supports for students and cybersecurity, which is being seen across the state as an issue. And so as federal budget decisions are made, this advocacy work helps us share our concerns directly with legislators who are making these decisions. I also wanted to just highlight May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and where there's a special focus on getting the word out about what you can do to take action for your own mental health and as well for those around you and your community. And it is important that we commit ourselves and others to make mental health a priority and do what we can to support each other in this. And I also just want to give a shout out to our teachers for teacher appreciation this month and for all you do for our students and to take care of our students and connect with our family and our community. And then also, this week is Nurse Appreciation Week, so I want to give a shout out to our nurses and for all the work you do in caring for our students and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Honor?
Thank you, Nancy. I will add to, just a little bit to the report. You did an excellent job. Signed by Jimmy Carter, October 5th, 1978. May is Asian American Pacific Island Heritage Month to commemorate the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the USA, which include the immigration, the first Japanese to the United States, May 7th, 1843, as well as the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869. Majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. Also, May is Jewish American Heritage Month. Originally, it was a week signed by President Jimmy Carter and President George W. Bush, extended it to a month. And we're to commemorate the contribution of Jewish-American educators, entrepreneurs, athletes, scientists, visual performing artists, medical and scientific advancements, writers, and the huge amount of vast amount of contributions of a racial diverse Jewish American community. I did attend the Coast to Coast, as Nancy shared. What I really want to really appreciate is the fact that we had an induction colloquium, which basically was the opportunity to see the new teachers and teachers who were mentoring the new teachers. It was absolutely amazing. We have a phenomenal staff of new people coming on board who are really dedicated and have their heart in education. And the fact that they shared their learning experiences and the fact that their attitude in terms of how they felt about our students was really heartwarming. And we have to really lay the credit with some of our leaders in the district. Ms. Vicky Gavlin, Dr. McAtee, Dr. Lovey, because those are the ones who identify, who develop, who do the curriculum, who do the evaluations in terms of how this district will be moving forward. So thank you very much.
No, that's all right, Madam Chair. No, I gave my report to Ann for this evening's items.
I have a short report. Mike and I went to the El Camino Car Show. I saw you there. Yeah, we had fun. A lot of fundraisers. I also went to the Surfside Social, and that was really fun to see the teachers and the fundraising that went on. I brought my neighbor, and she won something, so that was great. And I'm looking forward to another fundraiser this Friday. The Oceanside High School Band is holding a music showcase. Of all the students, they're going to be playing at Coombers on Friday night. So, that's it.
So, thank you, everyone. I was actually able to be a part of the 101 Dalmatians as one of their Drama Mamas. So that was just amazing to see the students start from just learning their, just getting their scripts, to auditioning, and to then getting to the part of just showcasing the show to the community and to the staff. Thank you so much to the parents that participated. Again, it's just, these are just little, small things that we have within our school district, and our staff just works so hard and diligently to show our students that when they don't think that they're capable of doing something, they try, and then they just come out and do something amazing, as we will see here tonight, obviously. And so with staff appreciation, would it be not only just teacher appreciation? I'd look to not only support, to thank our staff, all of our staff, not only our teachers, but all of our staff. There is no way that our students would be successful without all of you. You work diligently, you work hard, and you give it your all, and I appreciate that. It starts from just, you know, just the morning person, who, like, our SROs, our security, to, you know, just our custodial, to our teachers, our principals, our administrators, everybody just that works, you know, our cabinet, our superintendent, and so just our board. You know, we are all here for our students. We work diligently to support and do everything that we possibly can to do and be a part of this community, to see what their needs are and how we can best support our students so that they can be successful. And with that, just being a part of LCAP, being able to see all the things that we continue to need and how we need to change and how we need to continue to help our students be successful. Just being a part of the Rising Star, and again, seeing our students go from where they were originally in elementary. You know, Tiffany has been able to see students that she started with in elementary school to now being a part of the Rising Star in the end, and seniors, and seeing the success and even the things that she did as a teacher with her students. So just again, to all of our staff, I thank you, because I know that you give it your all, and for our parents that are within our school district, that you support your students and you continue to push them so that they continue to be successful by bringing them here and allowing us to love on them and to just be here to support them. I thank you. I would ask, though, one thing tonight and for future meetings as well, though, that as a courtesy, because we do have students, to be respectful of one another. We do have students here tonight that are presenting of their CTE programs, and I would ask that we would just respect one another's space. We have, even not just this meeting, but other meetings, we have an agenda here that our staff needs to hear, and when there's talking going on or just different things that are going on within the audience, our staff can't hear the direction that we're doing or sometimes don't understand things because they're bothered by what's going on around them. So I would ask that you would just hold it internally, if you can, at this time during this meeting, because it is a time for us to have this meeting. This is a public meeting, I understand that. But we are having our meeting, and so we are here directing and asking staff for certain things. So again, just please be respectful of one another. Respect our students more than anything, because they have worked hard to be here. Respect the space that they're in. So with that, we'll move on to general consent items. Oh, sorry, CSEA, sorry. We'll go with Tiffany. Oh, sorry, Marissa.
Good evening, Dr. Vitale, Board President Alvarez, and trustees. My name is Marissa Crawford, if you don't know by now. I wear many hats with the CSEA Union, and tonight, I'm presenting to you once again. Oh, I wanted to share. So next month, hopefully, Dora Hermio will be back with us. So this may be my last time speaking, and her grandbaby was born yesterday. She had a little girl. Next slide, please. Oh, it's already on the next slide. So tonight, I'm going to speak on a few different topics, spotlighting our essential staff. May events for classified staff. I want to spotlight our mothers. So Mother's Day is May 14th, 2023, and we also have Classified School Employees Week, which is the week of May 21st through the 27th. Next slide, please. So Happy Mother's Day to all the classified moms. Thank you. Roscoe's awesome. Thank you, Roscoe. So I looked up the definition of mom, and I could not find one I liked, so I wrote my own. What is a mom? One that shows empathy, care, and compassion for those entrusted with her care. I'm going to share our amazing classified staff who do just that every day. I'm a little off because of my terrible cold. I'm sorry. I apologize. So Everyday Moms in OUSD, we have... I apologize. I was trying my best not to go off. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Library Media Technicians. These moms do story time, check out amazing books that take students on adventures, host book clubs, and make the library a safe place to go. Administrative Assistants and Bilingual Office Assistants, office assistants as well. These moms support students, parents, and staff. They calm down angry parents. They are the information hub at site. Isn't he awesome? School Community Advisors. These moms translate, reach out, and provide support to their school community. They provide valuable resources to those in need. Health Technicians. They bandage the ouchies, soothe achy stomachs, monitor diabetic students, and administer love and support every day. Nutrition Service Workers. Feed our hungry children. They are probably one of the least acknowledged groups, but these moms do so much for our students and families. Noon Duties and Security. They are playground mediators that keep our students safe, and they are listening ear to students. Paraprofessionals. These moms do the heavy lifting. They change diapers, feed students, wipe noses. I could go on and on. Custodians. They open up gates, clean up after their many children, make sure bathrooms are clean and stocked for students and staff. They have eyes in the front, back, and both sides of their head. I hope you see the value and the role of the everyday moms that cater to every need of our students. Thank you for, thank you all from your CSEA family. Next slide, please. So as I stated, May 21st through 27th is Classified School Employee Week, and we have a video. In 1984, CSEA members passed a resolution at conference that would lobby the California Legislature to designate a whole week honoring classified school professionals.
The governor signed Classified School Employees Week, or CSEW, into law in 1986.
We are the reason why we celebrate our work in education every third week of May.
But why should we celebrate us?
Because we are indispensable.
We work to keep our campuses safe, clean, and operating efficiently.
From the classroom to the playground, the school cafeteria, to the college financial aid office.
We make a difference in education and our communities.
Because we are inspiring.
Every day, we make learning happen for our students.
Our passion, dedication, and the commitment to our work is unwavering.
Because we are invincible.
We rise above every challenge by creating opportunities to improve lives for ourselves, our students, and our communities.
We are educators for our students, and we are essential to our communities all across California.
I am a classified professional.
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 We are classified professionals.
Indispensable.
Inspiring.
And invincible.
The Union did a really good job on sharing that video with all of us, so I wanted to share it with you guys. And lastly, I wanted to spotlight our, our mom. She's a mom of two. That is the twenty twenty-three Classified School Employee of the Year, Martha Fregoso. The next slide has pictures. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't take the best pictures, but you guys get it. And then next slide, please. Thank you so much for all of your support and time and allowing me to be here the last few months with you all.
Thank you, Marissa. Now welcome Tiffany from ODA.
Thank you. I did not send a presentation this time. I actually gave my presentation in paper form to Ann just to show to the public that they can actually provide presentations. It doesn't have to be shown. Good evening, President Alvarez, Trustees, Superintendent Vitale, Cabinet colleagues and community members. I am Tiffany Cooper Ortega and honored to represent the amazing educators in Oceanside as the president of their association. You can see on those slides the things that we collaborated with OUSD on this month. Human resources, educational, educational support services, SBA task force, personnel support, TKK Summit and LCAP. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Teacher Appreciation Week. The official history of Teacher Appreciation Week dates back to nineteen fifty-three when First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt persuaded Congress that there needed to be a specific day to recognize teachers. Even with Eleanor Roosevelt taking the case to Congress and getting their help and support, it would take another twenty-seven years and the help of the National Education Association before the day became a nationally recognized day. Then with the help of the National Parent Teacher Association, the day was expanded to the first full week in May, which is this week. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May tenth, is the actual California Day of the Teacher. This year, CTA's theme is California Educators Planting Seeds, Inspiring Students and Future Educators. It's a nod to educators' critical role, not only nurturing and inspiring their students, but also as mentors and guides for new and rising members in the profession. This year's theme caused me to pause and reflect on the seeds that our educators plant every day. And although those seeds are frequently maligned and miscommunicated each month in this meeting, let's talk about what those seeds actually are. We can start with the obvious academics. Only, I can just talk loud. Teachers not only impart the seeds of content knowledge, but also teach how to research additional information, vet that information for subconscious and intended biases and cite resources so that they know that their information is actually factual. Educators nurture OUSD students and provide a safe, supportive environment, not to make a political statement, not to promote an agenda, as we have often been accused. We provide a safe and supportive environment for students because we respect them as humans and intelligent beings. And we find it important to recognize and acknowledge our students as they present or as they prefer. We defend the ability that, I'm sorry, we defend the ability for them to gather in groups that reflect other students, that give them a sense of belonging, whether that be a GSA, a rainbow club, a Christian club, a chess club, Huff and Puff, Ravenclaw, whatever. Educators nurture seeds by having books on their library shelf that are reflective of the diversity of the students in their classroom or by teaching a curriculum that's actually factual and considers the history of all Americans and not just the ones who were writing the history books or the ones who controlled the printing of the curriculum. Finally, we nurture by not only viewing our students as a whole, independent-thinking human, but also treating them as such and advocating for wraparound services that may help minimize deficiencies or address factors that may lead to a high effective filter, which research has proven can negatively impact a student's ability to learn. Things you would not think that we have to defend, like helping a child who can't see get glasses or providing meals to students that may not have had enough or anything to eat or assisting families in obtaining mental health intervention at no cost. And by the way, we do these things not in opposition to the families within our district. We help connect these resources with the full participation of parents and caregivers. OUSD educators, thank you so much for all that you do to meet each student where they are and pushing them to be the best version of themselves. Please keep planting the seeds of humanity, kindness and knowledge in our students. Nurture and protect those seeds so that they can bloom and blossom into productive members of our society that wield knowledge, practice humanity and inspire kindness. Our future depends on it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. We will now move on to, sorry, we will now move on to general consent items. We have.
We have two speakers on item K, Approval of Renewal Agreement with Borderland Security for Content Keeper Internet Content Filter. Those two speakers are Paul Hanisch and Joseph Kanter. Paul Hanisch will be first.
So one of the questions that I have for the board is why are there so many agenda items on this consent list? Why not have two meetings a month like you used to so that we can have proper oversight? Nothing, you know, we, we need to be able to debate these issues to have an open forum.
We're talking currently about.
I know, I'm addressing the items on the agenda.
Actual item K itself is the only one you just did on at this time.
I want to address the item filtering of school internet. Please don't interrupt me. It states that pornographic material must be filtered out in order to be eligible for a federal E-rate grant. You as a board have been made aware that there are objectionable materials in your library, yet you put them onus on the parents to try to filter this and screen these materials. Parents are not elected officials. You are. You are held accountable. You have a fiduciary duty to protect the district. The federal government could ask for this grant money back for your failure to protect the students. Speaking of which, what is the county financial officer telling you about the district's current financial status? I'd like to know and I think the public should know too. This particular school district has been in arrears and running deficits year after year. And this is a problem that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. I just want to open the night up by asking, my question for all of you today is, wouldn't you agree that one of the most special things about children is their innocence? My question is, why are we taking that away from them? Why are we not letting kids have the chance to learn and live their lives as they should and develop at a normal rate? We say we are here to talk about filtering online within schools and that's great. But let me ask you this, why are schools not filtering what kids can see in the books that they read? Specifically, why is pornographic inappropriate content available to kids in a written form at all? When I was nine years old or ten years old, I was outside playing, watching movies and enjoying my life. I wasn't reading books with inappropriate stories and inappropriate content. And today's kids should not be doing that either. Every kid deserves to be a kid and have the opportunity to enjoy their childhood without being forced to seek out their sexuality at an early age. Parents should be able to have faith that when their kids walk onto a school campus in Oceanside, that they will not have doctrine and inappropriate content exposed to their children. I know that's what I would want for my own kids. So members of the board, I ask you, would you want your kids exposed to some of the inappropriate content that kids are having exposed to them on school campuses? Would you go home and ask your spouse to have relations with you in front of these kids or ask, or to talk about inappropriate content in front of the students? Because when you allow these kids to open up these books, that's exactly what is happening. You know, to start this meeting tonight, we opened up with the Pledge of Allegiance and one of the lines in it is "One nation under God." And I am pretty sure that the God I serve does not want kids being exposed and manipulated in the way through the, through these reading materials. So I encourage you, Ms. Vitale and fellow board members, to consider the consequences and the psychological damage that can come from exposing kids to such content at such an early age, not just online, but also in written form as well. My final question is, are you prepared for the liability that you would have to endure if you guys were to be sued by someone over this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was the last one. Okay, we'll move forward. I have, I hear a motion to approve item general consent.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Have a first and, and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Presentation of the Board Regarding Career Technical Education. Start presentation, please.
Yes, good evening, Board of Education. I have Mrs. Cullis with us with some students who are going to share about our program here in Oceanside Unified School District in Career Technical Education. Ms. Cullis.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Alvarez, Trustees, Superintendent Vitale and Cabinet members. I would like to thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to highlight the work within our district through career technical education. Next slide, please. The portrait of a graduate represents our district's vision for the skills, traits and social emotional competencies that students need to succeed in college, career and life. This serves as our North Star that continues to guide the work within our programs and our CTE career pathways. Next slide, please. The graduate portrait envisions the outcomes for students. It describes the community's aspirations for what graduates will know, be able to be and do in order to thrive in their lives and careers. Next slide, please. Adaptable and future-ready adult. A CTE pathway is a sequence of two or more CTE courses within a specific industry. OUSD career pathways are an educational approach that provides students the opportunity to use industry-specific knowledge and skills learned in the classroom and in the world of work. A very important aspect of CTE is work-based learning component. CTE teachers have relationships with industry partners both locally and globally. Students are able to learn from experts as well as practice what they have learned. These opportunities help students to determine more specifically what careers they might pursue after high school. We have ten of the fifteen industries that are identified by the state of California as being industries that are thriving throughout our state. We selected the ten industries for our programs based on our local opportunities in San Diego County. For example, in another part of the state, agricultural might be a major industry and would be selected by LEA in that area. Here in Oceanside, we focused on opportunities for our students locally. We have a teaching staff that has the industry knowledge to support our students' progress in these areas. For example, our Environmental Innovation Academy, who have joined me here tonight. Next slide, please. So without further ado, I would like to introduce the instructor for our Environmental Innovation Academy, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, board members. As Teresa said, as, as career technical education or pathway teachers, we have the opportunity to, to really create some opportunities for our students that, you know, kind of build on what we're doing in the classroom. And so tonight I have six of the nine students who participated in Forestry Challenge. And Forestry Challenge was a new opportunity for us. But one of the benefits of being a CTE teacher is we get exposed at conferences or industry-related events about these opportunities for students outside the classroom. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to them. Like I said, they really have, I think, a better way of capturing what they did over this, over the two different events that we participated in. But before I bring in the two speakers, we have over here Alex, Alondra, Laura, Sarah, Ambry and Mia here. And I'm going to invite the two speakers, Sarah and Ambry, to talk a little bit more about the specifics of our participation this year.
Hi, I'm Sarah Anderson and I'm a sophomore at Oceanside High School. So the Forestry Challenge is an academic event for high school students who want to learn more about forestry and natural resource management. The event includes competition between schools all across California. So what we did is we participated in the regional event in the fall, which was held in San Bernardino National Forest. And even though it was our first time participating, we placed first, sorry, second and third among thirteen other schools. We were then invited to the championship in the Stanislav National Forest near Yosemite. In addition to the championship, we also got a tour of a local sawmill, broadening our perspectives on the different ways the forest is used. Both events allowed us to learn basic forestry skills while creating a presentation experience for us. So the tools that we use, one, which is pacing, which is a form of measurement called a chain, which is sixty-six feet, using only our, only our steps to be able to, only our steps to be able to find the distance to the measure, the height of the tree, which we won a competition for. We learned how to use logger's tape, a clinometer, densitometer, angle gauge, compass, increment borer, which takes a sample out of the tree to look at ring patterns, tree identification, how to read topographic maps, dichotomous key, volume table and many, many other tools. We enjoyed learning about this very important subject, us all being passionate about the environment and having some form of background knowledge, be it environmental science or engineering. And it was amazing to be able to put that use into the real world. The experience was perfect and well-rounded and one that we will look back on fondly. We enjoyed being outside, taking nature hikes and having recreational fun. It was almost like camping.
Next slide, please.
Hello, I'm Ambry Anton and I'm also a sophomore at Oceanside High School. And so as Sarah touched upon briefly, our experiences gave us the ability to apply concepts which we learn about in class to a real-world sustainability crisis, which in this case was the risk of severe wildfires in Californian forests. And so we learn about all sustainable methods inside, but going, being able to go out and work with people in the actual sustainability fields added an important layer of depth to what we already knew. And an example of this happened when we worked with members of a collaborative called Yosemite Stanislav Solutions, which worked to create a management plan for the Stanislav National Forest, which we had to study extensively for the challenge. And a core value of this program was the consideration of many different and often contradictory perspectives. And so as a group, we managed to connect this back to a focal topic in our own class, which is called the triple bottom line. And so because of this connection, we were able to earn points in our presentation by implementing the triple bottom line. And it gave us this really unique opportunity to talk with members of an actual group and like in the actual industry and connect with them using something that we learn about in class. And another piece of the challenge that I think was valuable to us all was being able to speak with people who actually live near the forest and who have lost or are at risk of losing their homes due to the large-scale wildfires happening in the area. And so learning from people so deeply impacted by the work that we were training to do made me and I'd say my whole team more invested in the topics in our pathway than we already were. And working in the forest also added another perspective to our class because we learn all about energy and sustainable design. And so seeing how some of those same concepts could be applied to forestry as well was a really insightful way to sort of bridge that gap for a lot of us. And so overall, the Forestry Challenge was just an incredible opportunity presented to our school's CTE pathways because it was a way to perfectly marry like our classroom studies with a real-world situation that we could all interact with. And so we're all just incredibly grateful to have had this experience. And for those of us who aren't graduating, we're very excited to come back and do it again next year. Thank you.
Next slide. Thank you. College and career access pathways. In twenty- In 2017, Oceanside and Maricosta College entered a CCAP agreement that set in motion free early college credit for our students in Oceanside Unified School District. There is a team made up of counselors, our college and career guidance technicians, site administration, and myself that work together to develop course sequences that align with our pathways and with that at Maricosta College. The courses we choose to offer through dual enrollment are University of California-approved, and they receive their early college credit, or they also have an opportunity to earn industry-specific certifications. Next slide, please. Here are the courses we offered that align with our pathways as well as provide opportunities to earn certifications. We have seen tremendous success at Surfside with our hospitality program. Surfside students have an opportunity to practice what they learn by interviewing and working with the Hyatt on a junior task force. Students are able to learn about the many different jobs and careers that exist within the hotel industry. Along with pathways, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Along with pathway courses, we offered the following general elective courses as well. A vision is that students will be able to earn one year of college credit before graduating high school. Next slide. Thank you. Perfect. Providing different means of earning early college credits such as articulation and dual enrollment via career pathways, we begin to see a culture of college plus career for all Oceanside Unified students. Next slide, please. In fact, forty-five percent of our students who take one early college credit course go on to take additional college classes. So with that, I'd like to invite you all to come join our CTE pathways at our annual CTE Spring Exhibition, which is being held Thursday, May twenty-fifth, at El Corzon Senior Center. You'll have an opportunity to learn more about the other pathways we have in the district, and you'll also have an opportunity to talk with students about the different projects and things that they've learned as they've participated in CTE pathways. With that, thank you so much.
Any questions for?
You answered all of my questions. I had about six different questions regarding the program. This was phenomenal, excellent, to bring real-world experiences to relate, that relate to the classroom is just phenomenal. And I, I one hundred percent support this program. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. How many of your seniors? One? Are you going to just continue this into college?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you.
We could also add that he has been accepted at University of California, San Diego, where he'll be studying in the fall.
Oh, congratulations.
I just want to applaud you all. Thank you for just continuing for Mr. Hernandez, for sharing the, just the wonderful things that your students have done, because I know that was one of my big things, is that I love to see and hear what our CTE students are doing, not only just in the progress, because they get to go out and experience these things that otherwise they wouldn't be able to. So thank you for taking, giving them the opportunity to be able to do that. So I applaud you all. Congratulations on the amazing work that you did on your, your first place. And just that's, I just can't even imagine all the things that you just learned, because I just, just hearing everything that you all did in just that short amount of time is just amazing to me. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll move on to six A. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators 2022-3, 2024. Staff presentation, please.
Thank you, President Alvarez. Each year, the State of California Commission on Teaching Credentially requires the district to submit a declaration of need for fully qualified teachers. This is just an estimate of potential needs for emergency permits or waivers. It does not reflect the actual numbers that we need, and there is no binding requirement to the numbers that we present. But it does allow for waivers in cases where we're hiring new teachers, teachers from out of state, teachers for the CTE program, or teachers that are working on an internship program, and it allows them to be covered while they work on completing their credentials and requirements.
Perfect, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item six A? Oh, do we have a public speaker? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes, we have one speaker, Emily Witchman.
Just real quick, Emily, before we start the clock. For, as we go through and as a public, when we're doing the public speaking part of this, if you would restate your name, because sometimes we have multiple people, and I don't always get the names, so if you could just restate your name, and if you have a student in this school, in which school, please, so we could do that.
Okay, my name is Emily Witchman. In the past, I've had my daughters, my grandkids go to this school district. Okay, part of this, as I understand, Todd, is there's the anticipated need for fully qualified teachers. And on that form, there was twenty-three CLAD teachers, which are the English Language Learner Credentials. So I'm pleased that you're getting ready to, for any ELL student who will attend this district. Looking at, at the three areas in our district that they would probably be moving into, how many of the CLAD, twenty-three CLAD teachers will be in the Back Gate area? And now that you will approve the anticipated need, you've closed down rentals and leveling it, you've adding portables to FUSAD and Libby, and now have you considered how many students are going to be generated by the building out of Pacifica whenever you sell that? And so our sixteen-to-eighteen teachers, CLAD teachers, classrooms, where will they be located? Where are they going to be teaching the English Language Learner students? So I hope you get, you, I hope others aren't going to be feeling what you've done in closing down rentals. Thank you.
A motion to approve item six.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to eight A. Approval of Resolution Number Thirty-four Twenty-two Twenty-three, authorizing of execution and delivery of a master governmental lease purchase agreement for the financing of purchase of four diesel buses.
Thank you, President Alvarez. The mission of the Transportation Department is to ensure an effective, efficient, and safe transportation program for students. After an inspection of the current school bus fleet, staff have identified four diesel school buses that have outlived their usefulness and need to be replaced. The district has located a piggyback agreement with terms in its best interest that would allow the purchase of the diesel buses. District staff requests board approval to finance the purchase of these buses by entering into the master governmental lease purchase agreement for four new diesel buses with Wells Fargo Bank. The total cost of the four buses is eight hundred eighteen thousand forty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any questions for staff? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to eight B. Approval of Resolution Number Thirty-five Twenty-two Twenty-three, authorizing the execution and delivery of a master governmental lease purchase agreement of one electric bus.
Thank you. The district desires to acquire a second electric school bus for its fleet using the Hybrid and Zero-Emission Truck and Bus Program Grant, also known as the HVIP Grant and a Master Governmental Lease Purchase Agreement. In 2021, the district was awarded the HVIP Grant administered by the California HVIP and California Air Resource Board, also known as CARB, in the amount of a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Board approval is now being requested to finance the balance of the cost of the electric bus by entering into the master governmental lease purchase agreement with Wells Fargo Bank. The total cost of the electric school bus is three hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars, with the HVIP grant funding one hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, and the general fund contributing one hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? We have a motion for eight B.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Nine A. Approval of Memoranda of Understanding to Operate Expanded Learning Programs for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, President Alvarez. This is our annual renewal to operate our expanded learning programs. The district receives funding from the After School Education and Safety, or ACES, Program Grant, and Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Relief, or ESER, Fund, and the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, ELOP, just in case you needed another acronym. Grant to operate before and after-school enrichment and intercession programs at our elementary and middle schools. Each grant supports academic and enrichment programs outside of regular school hours for students in grades TK through eight. Each provider works closely with OUSD staff to coordinate services for students and families served by ACES, ESER, and ELOP grants. The district collaborates with these organizations to operate these before-and-after-school programs and intercession programs as well at all of our schools listed in the board item this evening. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the listed expanded learning providers to operate our before-and-after-school and intercession programs for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Perfect. Any questions for staff?
I'm just glad this year they've added in the intercession programs in these agreements so it can carry us forward in the breaks that the kids have after-school opportunities or vacation break opportunities. So I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ten, policy development. All right, we'll start with item A. Board Policy Six-One Seven Three, Education for Homeless Children.
Thank you, President Alvarez. This is the California School Boards Association update and revision to our current board policies to reflect new changes in law. Specifically, this is being updated to reflect a new Assembly Law AB four zero eight, which was passed in 2022, which mandates that districts establish homeless education program policies and update those policies at least once every three years. Our new board policy reflects this, and it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the revision of Board Policy Six-One Seven Three, Education for Homeless Children.
Do we have a comment?
Yes, one public comment from Deb Wickman.
Thank you, President Alvarez, board members, Dr. Vitale, and cabinet members. My name is Deb Wickman. I am the Family and Community Engagement TOSA, or Teacher on Special Assignment, proudly working in the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion with Dr. Sparks. I'm here tonight to kind of educate and highlight some of the work that we do within the DEI department. One of the many programs the DEI department oversees and manages is to support and provide resources and services for our two hundred and forty-one identified transitional families. The term transitional includes those families living in temporary shelters, multiple families residing within a single residence to make ends meet, and those without shelter, couch surfing, or living in cars and campers. The number of transitional families within the district has tripled in just the last two years. Thanks to our community outreach and generous community partners, this year we have provided personal care kits to over two thousand students and families throughout the district. The Assistance League of North County has provided opportunities for approximately a hundred and seventy-five of our foster and transitional students to shop at local retail stores and purchase much-needed clothing and shoes. The Tri-City Pantry provides biweekly food distributions to an average of four hundred OUSD families a month. We have approximately a hundred and fifty students a week take home family, a Friday backpacks, with food provided by the San Diego County and the North County Food Banks. And that does not include the number of students and families that seek assistance from our site food pantries, such as those at Oceanside and El Camino High Schools. We provide access to transportation, hotel vouchers, food and gas cards for emergency support, Wi-Fi hotspots, and most importantly, we help guide families to resources and agencies within the city and county that can help them to search for long-term solutions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board Policy, Board Policy Six-One Seven Three Point One, Education for Foster Youth.
Thank you, President Alvarez. This is a revision to Board Policy Six-One Seven Three Point One, Education for Foster Youth. CSBA assists districts with revision and updates to board policies to reflect changes in law, and this particular revision to Six-One Seven Three Point One is being made to reflect new state law, new Senate Bill Five Three Two, which was passed in 2022, and other updates. Specifically, it's being updated to move material regarding a safe learning environment toward the beginning of the policy as it's philosophical in nature and has general implications, and to reflect the updates in the law. We're recommending that the Board of Education approve the revision of this Board Policy Six-One Seven Three Point One, Education for Foster Youth.
We have one speaker, Deb Wickman.
Thank you again. So along with providing support to our transitional families, as mentioned previously, the DEI department also works with our administrators, staff, and site liaisons to monitor and provide supports and services for our fifty-nine identified foster children and their guardians. Recently, after hosting a series of community listening circles, we heard from another group of guardians needing our support, that of our kinship families. Kinship families don't fall under the traditional definition of foster families, but need the same level of supports and resources. These are family members other than a biological parent, such as grandparents or aunts and uncles, that are raising children due to various reasons, such as deployment or death of a primary caregiver. As of now, we don't have a formal way to identify these families, but we're working with our area staff to easily identify them so that we can track and monitor these students and make sure they are getting the services that they are entitled to.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second. Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just want to state real quick that I compliment you all for just the support that we're looking to get our families and the way that we're changing and trying to identify those that are within our community. There are so many out there that, you know, we've had a conversation that we're not identifying, there's so many that are missed, especially in the kinship part of it, and just even how we're identifying our students within our district that are currently in our district that are listed as either transitional or foster, that we're looking to change that way that we're doing things. So thank you for just listening to, to our community, to staff, or to board members even, to just see how we can continue to help our community. Thank you. Ten C. We'll go Board Policy Six-One Seven Seven, Summer Learning Programs.
Thank you again, President Alvarez. This is a revision to Board Policy Six-One Seven Seven for our summer learning programs. CSBA assists districts with these types of revisions and updates, and this revision to Board Policy Six-One Seven Seven for summer learning programs is being made to reflect new laws and new guidance from the California Department of Education. In particular, it's being updated to clarify that summer learning programs are part of expanded learning opportunities, ELO program, or ELOP, and to reflect the requirements of the ELO programs to offer access to specific students as provided in new assembly laws. We're recommending that the Board of Education approve the revision of Board Policy Six-One Seven Seven, Summer Learning Programs.
Move approval.
Second. Have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ten D. Policy Five-One Four Eight Point Two, Before and After School Programs.
Here we go again, with the revision to Board Policy Five-One Four Eight Point Two, Before and After School Programs. As we receive assistance from CSBA, this is being updated to clarify that it applies to expanded learning opportunities beyond the regular school day, including before-school, after-school, summer, vacation, and/or intercessional programs, and to reflect new laws in the Assembly Bill One Eighty, One Eight One, which was passed in 2022, and AB One Eighty-Five, which was passed in 2022 as well. We're recommending that the Board of Education approve the revision of Board Policy Five-One Four Eight Point Two for Before and After School Programs.
I'll make a motion.
I have a public comment real quick, sorry.
Thank you. Yet again, another program that falls under the auspice of the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The Before and After School Program is another responsibility of the DEI department and staff. We work with six different providers to oversee and manage the Before and After We work with six different providers to oversee and manage the before and after school programs at 19 different school sites. This program directly unpacks approximately 1,300 students during the school year and another 700 students during intercession. Along with offering tutoring and enrichment opportunities, these programs provide a safe and secure environment for our students.
Thank you, Deb. I have a motion for seven... I don't even write D.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board Policy BP 3516, Emergencies and Disaster Preparedness Plan.
Thank you. This board policy reflects current law updates around disaster and emergency preparedness, which includes training for staff, ensuring that we have on-file annual safety plans, and that we make sure that each site performs the drills as needed and required by the law. We recommend that approval of this policy.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Move approval.
I have a first and I'll second.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board Policy BP 6162.6, Use of Copyright Materials.
Yes, this board policy update is from a policy that was last updated in 2012 to reflect the importance of copyrighted materials and how they are used effectively in our modern world. This follows state and local laws and ensures that our students and teachers have access to those materials and that those who have created them receive the credit for creating those materials. We recommend move approval of this board policy.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for...
I'll make the motion.
Ten, thank you. I have a first.
I second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board Policy 5141.3, Health Examinations.
Yes, this approval of revisions to the board policy reflects current law. It incorporates the requirements of the law to have oral health assessments for our youngest learners by parents, taking their students to dental appointments before kindergarten or first grade. The requirement for immunizations for things like polio, things like whooping cough, and also hepatitis that are also required by law. This also outlines vision, hearing, and scoliosis screening that is provided as a screening tool for our families with parent permission by our school nurses so that students may receive the care that they need in a timely manner. It also includes that students participating in sports, cheer, and other athletic events have a medical exam to make sure that they are healthy and able to participate in those activities, and that when a student has an illness or perhaps an injury, that they are cleared by a medical doctor to ensure that they again are safe and well to participate in these activities. We recommend approval of this policy.
Great, thank you.
Deb Wickman.
Again, thank you for this opportunity. Thanks to the work of our community school coordinators and our Community Schools Initiative grant, the district has established a partnership with Vision to Learn that is providing free vision screenings and eyeglasses for students. As of April, with the consent of parents, 2,889 students have been screened, and of those, 797 required prescription eyeglasses, free of charge. Thirty-seven percent of the students failed their vision screening tests. This program started with our six community schools and is now expanding to the remaining schools throughout the district. The goal is to screen another 665 students prior to the end of this school year and move to the remaining sites during the 2023-2024 school year.
Oh, thank you. That's amazing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second on item 10G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board Policy BP 6164.1, High School Graduation Requirements.
Thank you very much. This approval of revision to the high school graduation requirements reflects current law to support our students with disabilities and their ability to graduate from high school.
Perfect, thank you. Do you have a motion for Board Policy H?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Not Board Policy, sorry. Agenda, item 10H. Thank you. All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Board Policy BP 5127, Graduation Ceremonies and Activities.
Yes, approval of the revisions to this board policy, which was last updated in 2010, formalizes AB 1248, which permits students to wear regalia, recognized cultural, or other religious adornments in addition to their cap and gown at graduation ceremonies.
Thank you.
We recommend approval of this board policy.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for...
I'll make a motion.
I second. I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment of non-agenda items. We'll move forward with 11-1. At this time, the Board of Education will receive comments about items and issues within the Board's jurisdiction that do not appear on the agenda. Generally, each person may speak for up to three minutes. However, the total time for the public input may be limited to 20 minutes per item or topic. While the total time per speaker for a given topic may be slightly reduced in certain circumstances, all persons wishing to address the Board will have a meaningful opportunity to do so during this meeting. Two, an individual may only turn in one off-agenda public comment card per board meeting. In addition, no one individual may give their time to anyone else for the purpose of extending their public comment time. Three, open meeting laws and fairness to other residents who may have an interest in your topic prohibit the Board from taking action or engaging in extended discussion on your concerns. Again, I would ask that when you come up, because there are sometimes multiple speakers called up at the time, that you would state your name again for us and that you would state if your child is in or what school your child is at, so that we can just make notice what might be going on. Thank you. Jan?
Our first three speakers, Kathy Seward, Laurel Hill, and Jennifer Rivette.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Seward, and I'm the Library Media Tech at Krista McCullough Elementary. And we are here to speak tonight on behalf of the Library Techs. The Library Media Tech stood in the gap for the district when the district wanted to go to one-to-one student devices. The LMTs at each site were the ones who assisted the students and the teachers. And then there were no real policies or procedures in place when this went into effect. But the LMTs rose to the challenge. We were told originally that Chromebooks were the same as textbooks, so it made sense for the libraries to take on this task. If you look at what's in front of you, it's probably not what your textbook looks like. There were little devices there, and we've learned over time that they are different. But during this time, no additional hours were granted, no additional pay for working out of class as IT reps, probably because IT is getting paid at the level 40-ish and LMTs are getting paid at the level 20-ish. So it was very cost-effective for it to be handled in this way. Well, three years later, we've seen, we've learned, Chromebooks are in fact not the same as a textbook. And the LMTs, whose hours were cut and additional duties handed to them and haven't had their job description reviewed in 23 years, went back to HR to say, you know, this needs to be looked at. But unfortunately, HR and IT said, no, Chromebooks and textbooks are the same, and you're not doing anything more complex than you were before. And so rather than look at increasing our steps and reevaluating the work and quite honestly, what we did to help step up during a time when the whole school district stepped up in very many ways, they said, we'll just take some things off your plate. And now the teachers can fill out the help tickets. And the teachers didn't really get any clear policies or procedures on that. Now IT's feeling a little frustrated, the teachers are feeling a little frustrated, and the LMTs are disappointed in how this has been handled. We would really like to reach out to the Board and to our superintendent to ask you to reevaluate the situation that we're facing and reconsider the support that the LMTs are giving to the front lines, to the students at every school, so that their Chromebook works and it's getting taken care of in the way it needs to be. Thank you.
I'm Laurel Hill, and I have two children who have since graduated from El Camino and Ocean Shores. But standing with me is Angie Cruz, and she's also had three graduates from Oceanside, from El Camino. The district has not been responsible updating our job descriptions. The last time the LMT description was updated was 2000. We have spent the past five years actively working to make a more current and reflective update. With the onset of the pandemic, while you worked safely from your homes, we worked on campus, zooming with 20 to 30 classes a week. Each day, we left the comfort and safety of our homes to go out into the then unknown. We trudged along because our only desire was to be there for our students. When the world was in a state of despair and uncertainty, we stood in the gap that needed filling. When our students suddenly left school with literally supplies on their desks, we came in and figured out how to get a device and a charger into the hands of every OUSD student. When families were unable to use their devices, we stood up and took the lead to support those families. Personally, I drove to homes, daycares, I met them after hours, anything that was needed to assure families were able to continue learning. I know the kind of people the LMTs are, and I guarantee I'm not the only one who went above and beyond. Now that we have worked through the past three years implementing and improving systems that we are finally able to revise the job description that has literally changed in almost every conceivable way since 2000, it is incredibly incomplete and unreflective of the support the LMTs have provided, not just our own campuses and students, but also IT and fiscal. Our days are filled with the usual and unexpected tasks, but more so, it is not unusual to be reading to 30 first graders when four or five kids will show up with a device in hand. We just figure it out. The complexity of multitasking seems to be lost on those in charge. I am not here to complain about all we did to help support our students. I am here to complain about the district's view of it all. Most importantly, how Dr. McAtire and HR view our job. After years of working without an updated job description, our thought was that the district would see all we had been tasked with and see our value. Sadly, we had a much different outcome. Out of hundreds of hours spent preparing the job description, we thought that with all the new expectations, the district would recognize our worth. They did not. The answer to all the hard work and time we have put into improving the systems that were not in place has been to redelegate the duties we have become used to so that we will appear not to warrant an increase in steps. The district's answer to our request for respect is to take away what we have been doing and give it to someone else with more on their plate than they deserve. Eventually, there will be a need for more persons in the IT department to handle the simple tasks we were told were not technically challenging. Only the IT department will pay one tech enough to have given each of the LMTs a $2 an hour increase, not very fiscally responsible. All of this is to avoid showing us that we are essential and a meaningful member of the support staff that keep our schools running. Dr. McAtire, please know, when I do not hold book fairs to self-fund my library because of the work mostly being done outside of my work hours, it is because you showed us how the district really sees us. When I do not stay late to assist a student getting a device so they can do their homework, it is you.
Sorry, time is up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Rivette. I have five children who have gone through schools in this district, including McCullough Elementary, Martin Luther King Middle School, and El Camino. I have two current students at El Camino, one's graduating this year. I am the current Library Media Tech at King Middle School, and I have been there for six and a half years. It is an amazing school site with a supportive staff and students about whom I care very much. Since last week when I received news of Dr. McAtire's findings, the staff at my school has done nothing but offer me support and express disbelief at those findings, as has the IT SST who is assigned to my school. This stack of 82 pieces of paper represents almost 1,000 Chromebooks that have walked through my library doors since the beginning of the school year. It does not include the Chromebooks that have come in because their batteries are dead or the kids who walk in because they forgot their Chromebook at home. If you count those, it doubles the stack of paper. As you've already heard, the LMTs are incredibly discouraged by the lack of respect that is implicit and being told that our jobs are no more complex than they were 23 years ago or even five years ago. In Dr. McAtire's findings, you will see that he compares Chromebooks to textbooks, and this is inaccurate. First, prior to the institution of one-to-one devices, elementary LMTs didn't even deal with textbooks. At most, they just had to receive textbooks or other curriculum materials and get them into the classrooms. Their entire world was shaken up when Chromebooks were added to the mix. They went from spending their days engaging students and encouraging them to read to being the ever-busy technology handlers and trying to squeeze the reading in as well. Second, at the middle school and high school level, we checked most textbooks in and out at the beginning and the end of the school year. No student walks into my library with a textbook that won't turn on and asks me to help them with it. There are no service tickets involved with textbooks. There are no charging cords involved with textbooks. In fact, the only similarity between textbooks and Chromebooks is the barcode on it and that it's required for a student to learn. Third, in addition to the student one-to-one devices, we have also been handled the distribution of teacher devices. In the past four years, each teacher has been given three new devices, each with a set of components that we have been asked to account for whenever a teacher leaves the district or retires. All computer equipment for teachers prior to these devices was handled by IT, and no other staff devices are checked out through the library. IT still handles all other staff devices, including the computer on the desk in my library. As LMTs, we've been asked to become IT helpers in more ways than one, making our jobs more complex. We helped significantly in the development of handling one-to-one devices and had a system that worked, and that system is now broken. The cost of giving the 22 of us a raise would be less than hiring one new IT person. It should not be too much for this school district to acknowledge and compensate us for the contributions that we have made and continue to make. Please do not approve the findings that Dr. McAtire has given us.
Thank you.
Help us find our way back to loving our jobs.
Next three speakers, Nicole Watson, Deb Wickman, and Michael Richardson.
Father God, I just want to thank you for this time here today. And as I have public comment, I have the freedom of speech to praise you, Lord Jesus. Oh, God, you are precious, you are holy, you are the name above all names, Lord Jesus. And I just want to thank you for the ones who are sitting in these seats fighting, for the ones who didn't get to make it, who are fighting against these things that are being hidden and denied again and again, Lord Jesus. I praise you, Father. I pray that you continue to build them up. I pray that you continue to convict the hearts of those who may be considering the truth and pointing out that truth, Father God. I pray that you protect those people, Lord Jesus. And I thank you. I praise you, Father God. I am happy to hear the good things that are going on here, Lord Jesus, but the fact of the matter is, Father, you know, and you are hurting, Father God. And I pray that these things continue to be revealed, Lord Jesus. I pray that you continue to light a fire within the hearts of the parents here fighting and revealing these things, God. I thank you, Father. I praise you, Father, because your work is not done, Lord Jesus, but I know that you died for every single person in here, Lord God, that you love every single one of us despite the sin that is in our lives. We are all sinners. We are not without reproach, Father God, but you love us, and you died for us, and you bled for every single one of us, Father God. So I pray that you convict the hearts of those here, that you continue to put a fire in those who are fighting, God. And I hope that those who are here, Lord Jesus, they remember that all they have to do, Father God, you are just to forgive us if we confess our sins, Lord God, and you will cleanse us of all in righteousness, Father God. But the wages of sin is death, and the gift of God is through Jesus Christ, Father God. You gave us that gift, Lord God, so I pray that we are all able to confess our sins, especially the ones of those who are hurting our children, God. May our sins be confessed, Father God, in the name of Jesus, Father. May we acknowledge who you are, what you have done, Father God, that you died and you rose again on the third day, Lord God. And you are alive here today, Father God, and we will all have to answer to you. And that time is coming very soon. I praise you, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Just real quick, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry. And your students go to which school? Your students go to which school? Thank you. Hi, sorry.
Thank you again, President Alvarez, board members, Dr. Vitale, and cabinet members. As you know, my name is Deb Wickman. I'm a proud resident... I'm a proud resident of Oceanside and a teacher for the Oceanside Unified School District for 34 years. My husband and I have three incredible sons, as well as two awesome daughters-in-law, all students of OUSD and graduates of El Camino. And if my five grandchildren lived within our attendance area, I would be proud and thrilled to have them serve as students in OUSD. For the past several months, I have sat at home listening to the monthly board meetings on KOCT and find myself growing increasingly angered and frustrated. Each month, there's a small minority of voices from people, many of whom do not have children in OUSD, that are allowed to exercise their political rights and share misleading and often inaccurate views regarding our work. We are living in a climate of emboldened intolerance, and I realize that by remaining silent, I am allowing these voices to go unchecked. Previously tonight, I highlighted just some of the work and services that we oversee and coordinate in the DEI office. For those in the audience that don't understand the need for these services and supports for our students and families, how blessed you are to not have to understand. Ask any teacher how focused a student is on their academics when they are hungry or anxiety-ridden because they are unsure where they're going to sleep tonight, or unable to read because they can't see properly. How blessed are you to not have to understand the challenges and obstacles that many of our students and families face on a daily basis? We are making a huge impact with improving the lives and the students of the families and the students that we serve. Here in OUSD, we do listen to the needs and the wants of our families. Dr. Sparks, it is a privilege and an honor to work alongside you and our small but mighty DEI team. It is inspiring to see, even in the face of ongoing criticism and ridicule, you hold steadfast and are even more determined, motivated, and committed to the work of serving our students and families. And Dr. Vitale, in the 36 years I have been in education, I have worked under the direction of six superintendents, but none more than I respect and admire as you. You lead this district with integrity and principle. You handle the uncalled-for disrespect, criticism, and hostility with grace and unwavering character. You serve as a role model to our students and our community, and I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Deb.
Well, I have a little different perspective, as you can imagine. A couple of years ago, a few of us started coming to the school board meetings because we had some concerns. We didn't understand why the school scores were so low. We didn't understand why you were spending our hard-earned tax money the way you were, and we felt like you were teaching hate and bigotry. So we wanted to come and find out what was going on. We were hoping that you would offer us a chance to sit down and talk, but no. The school board and the school staff has never wanted to talk to us. All you do is issue proclamations, lies, and misstatements about us. The most flagrant and outrageous one was on February 11th. Jordi, you sent out an email to your, you called them allied community, and you said that there was an, there was a out-of-town, out-of-town group of LGBTQIA+ haters. Well, first of all, we're not out of town. My mother graduated from Oceanside High School in 1938. I was born here. I graduated from, in fact, I was in the first class at South Oceanside Elementary School. Oscar Palmquist was my teacher, I mean, my principal, and he was just a courageous man who really loved kids, something I wonder about in this day. So we're local people. We live here. We care about our schools. I'm an alumni. I went all the way through school. How many of you went to Oceanside schools? Did anybody? Anybody here? So you can't call us outsiders. You're the outsiders. You came down from hell and spread a locus on us, and we are disgusted and we are ashamed at what you've done to our schools. We are not haters. Well, maybe we hate what you've done to our schools.
Mr. Richardson, where do your children go or grandchildren?
Our next three speakers, Maria Oshama, Emily Witchman, and Beth Barnum.
Good evening, President Alvarez, Dr. Vitale, board members, and colleagues up here today. My name is Maria Oshama. I am the district social worker for Oceanside Unified, and I'm here today because at the last board meeting, there was a lot of talk about school clubs, and particularly the concern that we weren't making room for Christian clubs. And that's not a new concern, so that's a concern that folks have brought in the past to make sure that we have space for Christian clubs. In fact, the Equal Access Act is a U.S. federal law brought into law in 1984 to compel federally-funded public schools to provide equal access to extracurricular student clubs. This was lobbied for by Christian groups who wanted to ensure students the right to conduct Bible study programs during lunch and after school. The Equal Access Act mandates public schools provide equal access to extracurricular school clubs. The act provides that if a school receives federal aid and has at least one student-led non-curriculum club that meets outside of the class time, it must allow additional such clubs to be organized, and it must give them equal access to meeting spaces and school publications. So that's great news that we get to have clubs because our students love clubs, they need clubs, it provides them connection to school, it's super important. In our district, we have over 120 clubs in our middle schools and our high schools. That's four middle schools and two comprehensive high schools, and there are at least seven Christian clubs in those schools. So we do have Christian clubs in our schools. I just went through and looked at all the different clubs and kind of highlighted some pretty cool clubs like Anime, Best Buddies Club is a club that's in lots of schools, that's really awesome, Ceramics Club, Coding Club, GSA, that's the Gender Sexuality Alliance, Hip-Hop Club, Ballet Folklorico, Rock Band, Skateboarding Club, Pokemon BMX, Astronomy, Herpetology, Card Gaming, Art, Bowling Club. So there's just something for everyone. It's super important for our students, and thanks to the Equal Access Act of 1984, we can keep them going strong. Thank you.
A couple of weeks ago, there was some test scores cited at a city council meeting, so I just thought you would understand where this is coming from. So this was the Oceanside Unified report card, 2122, that they reported on, and those figures were taken from a district-wide of all students except for the charter schools. And in the English language, and again, this is based on the Smarter Balance Assessment System, which utilizes computer-based tests and performance that allows students to show what they know and be able to do. Okay, so this is from the state of California, as you know. So the English language scores came from just reading. There's three categories in ELA, but this is just on reading because it's the basics. Eighty-six point, 84.61% of our students were near or below state standards. So to me, that's failing our students. In the math category, the three, there's three areas. This one was concepts and procedures. 86.41 students were either near or below state standards. Again, failing our students. In science, that's a fairly new testing. I included life science, physical science, earth, and space, and that was a little better. That was 74.2 of our students, not better, but that were below or near state standards. So when you think that we think you are hurting our district, this is what we're talking about. I'm hoping that you're giving our teachers the information, the training they need for these academics. Our kids aren't even, aren't even close to where they need to be, aren't even made to be global graduates. And so we want you to, eventually with the funding the way it is, I'm hoping that our Department of Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, get back to student services, get back to all kids, get back to what you do best for all kids. And so stop that, which promotes critical race theory, which involves the whole district, which involves ethnic studies, all that. Also, teach the basics. Obviously, you're not teaching the basics because look at the basics in reading, the basics in math, and so I'm hoping at the next time that I come up here, that these scores will be elevated, elevated, so that I know that our teachers are working hard and you're giving them what they need. So this is what I just wanted to point it out. This is where these stats come from. So if you want any more information, just let me know.
My name is Beth Barnum. I was born and raised in Oceanside. I purchased my home in 1996. My daughter, who is graduating from Mission Vista High School, is not in Oceanside School District because I saw the writing on the wall when she was in third grade. I pulled my son out in the fall of 2020 due to mask mandates, so I homeschool him. I'm going to read an excerpt from the New American Magazine. This is from Dwight R. Lee. He has a long pedigree, including research fellow at the Independent of Institute Emeritus Chair. He is also at Georgia State University. This is from his excerpt in 1986. "As long as education is provided publicly, it will be controlled by and for the benefit of public education professionals. The reason for this is straightforward," and I will skip to, "as long as education is funded publicly, decisions on educational policy will be made politically. The interest of consumers will remain diffused and unorganized and dominated by the focused and organized interests of the public school professionals." That is why I pulled my child out of school. He had an IAP. He was a sped student. He is reading novels. He is currently reading 1984 by George Orwell. He understands what is going on today. So I have tried to bridge the gap, as some other people have explained, and you guys don't want to listen, so what I'm going to do is educate parents, which I have been doing since here, meeting with them afterwards, on how you pull your child out of public school. So the first thing you want to do, parents, is you want to go to cde.ca.gov, and in the search, you put private school affidavit, or you can go up and just put in private school affidavit for California. Scroll down to the filing affidavit. It takes about five minutes. It is free. No public education school is going to tell you how to do this. You are stating that you are the educator. You type in your private school name. Make sure you don't have your first or last name or your address on it. You make sure you print out that paperwork. Make sure that you always keep a paper trail. You also need to email your school, tell them you're pulling them from public school, and that you are going to do a private school affidavit, short for PSA. Again, keep that paper trail. The next thing that you're going to do is you're going to go to HSLDA.org. It stands for Homeschool Legal Defense Association. Why? Because these are your lawyers. It costs $150 a year, and if anybody sends you a truancy letter or knocks on your door, you give HSLDA a call and they will help you. They are your legal defense team. They also help with anyone that is new to homeschooling. And am I going to kid anybody? Is homeschooling easy? Absolutely not. But do I know that parents look for the best interests of their child versus the educator? Absolutely. And that is why you guys have declining enrollment. Thank you.
Next two speakers, Richard Newton and Patty Kaye.
Hello, my name is Richard Newton. I do not have any children in the school district. I am a property owner and taxpayer, and over the 33 years I've been in the county, I figure I paid over $200,000 in property taxes, much of that which goes to the educational system, so I have a right to comment. Superintendent Vitale, members of the board and the public, the board exists for a reason. It is not intended to be a rubber stamp consistently approving every item before it without debate, but is supposed to use due diligence in each and every case. Anything less is a dereliction of duty. Both the current and former board presidents are too lazy to even ask the question, are there any nays with each vote? To not bother to ask, are there any nays, is appallingly lazy. Respect the public enough to at least put up the appearance of doing your job and ask this question on each and every vote. Is there a silent dissenter? The public has a right to know. This is such an obvious mockery of your duties that a few meetings back, the public was laughing at you, shouting sarcastically, "5-0, 5-0, 5-0," before every vote was taken. It is simply not statistically feasible that every item on the agenda is approved unanimously without discussion throughout the entire year by five supposedly independent voters. That strongly suggests collusion. If there is a foregone conclusion that every item will be approved, then the entity running the district is not you, the puppet board, but the puppet master, who is holding your strings? Specifically, who puts items on the agenda? Are agenda decisions agreed to by all board members in advance, behind closed doors? Does any due diligence take place? Or have board members simply agreed in advance to approve every item on the agenda of every meeting for the entire year? Either scenario is a violation of the Brown Act. The only other alternative is that you are all just lazy and find it easier to vote yes on everything without even thinking about it. That would be a dereliction of duty by each and every one of you. So which is it? Corruption or laziness? And who is your puppet master?
Hi, Patty Kaye. Went to school in Oceanside, know children presently, but definitely a stakeholder that would like better outcome for her investment, like most of us here who have an interest in Oceanside and been here longer, as Mike said, than most of you. I want to remind Mike and Stacy and Raquel and Eleanor, Nancy wasn't here in 2019, of the revisions to the code that they okayed, and this is for knowledge of parents that are here or listening. You all on the board approved of these revisions for the transgender and gender non-conforming students. I don't know if you remember them. I don't know if the parents are aware of them, but they will be, and I think these, this policy regulations must make it very difficult for teachers in the classroom. You've really asked a lot of them. The examples of types of conduct which are prohibited in the district for staff, teachers, children, and may constitute harassment include, but are not limited to. You all four voted that teachers refusing to address a student by a name and the pronouns consistent with his identity is a violation, and that will be probably until you get more lawsuits thrown at you. You are, the teachers are violating if they block a student's entry to the restroom of their gender-chosen identity, and that will be until you get a lawsuit where a female possibly is molested or raped. So that will be coming, I'm sure. You are in violation, you voted that they are in violation if they, and teachers, for revealing a student's status to individuals who do not have a legitimate need for the information without the student's written consent. That means includes you, the parents. Rejection by the district itself of a student's asserted identity, denial of access to facilities that correspond with their chosen identity, improper disclosure of their status is a violation, or if they choose a different dress than their normal birth gender. I can't imagine being a teacher in a classroom. I've been in the classroom, but this would make it really tough. The right to privacy again is reasserted, and the district violates if they disclose the information even to the parents.
Time's up.
At this- At this time, do you have any questions or anything to close? No. Thank you. At this time, then we adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned at 8:03. Thank you.